All right, here we go. It is 6:02 December 20th, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting Montgomery City Council into session at this time. Apologies for a little bit of the lateness. We had technical difficulties. We have a president. Everyone on the council is here with us. Thank you for attending there in person and those who are tuning in from afar. We appreciate your interest in our city. I'd like to ask that you silence phones and any other electronic devices to avoid any interruptions in our proceedings this evening. And with that, I'd like to invite you to join me in the invocation and a salute to our flag. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the blessings that we receive every day. May we continue to strive to be a grateful people, always thankful especially for the reason for this season, for salvation in your Son, Jesus Christ. And we just ask for faith and family and freedoms to be protected in our country, our city as part of our country. Lord, that you would watch over us and protect us from our enemies, heal the sick, and as always make provisions for the poor. Use us for your glory. Give us wisdom as we make our decisions this evening and moving forward. And we ask this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
To the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the Texas flag.
Honored to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. We had no one sign for speaking. We double-checked that. Anybody not turning forms? All right. Consent agenda items one and two. One is approval of the city council meeting minutes for 11:24. And the other is a possible escrow agreement between the city of Montgomery and CTE Agri-science Campus on a parcel of land. Items one and two, what's the council's pleasure? Separate or together?
Together.
Together is fine.
Together is fine? Any objections? No. All right. Need a motion to approve consent agenda items one and two.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Carol, I'll take Casey as a second. Motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving consent agenda items one and two, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone approve, say no. We will approve consent agenda items one and two. Carol.
Carol.
Second to Casey. Item three, consideration possible action by the Montgomery City Council acting as the zoning board of adjustment regarding a requested appeal of a denial of the use of the property at 502 Louisa Street, currently zoned R1, single-family residential for commercial use.
Thank you, Mayor. The owner of 502 Louisa began using the existing single-family home for professional office for a commercial trucking company. I don't know when that occurred. Allegedly, the owner resides at the property. City staff contacted the property owner, business owner, occupant of the property, denying the commercial use and providing information in the way of the property owner to appeal the decision to the board of adjustment, which is council, based on the current zoning of the property. So the property is zoned R1. I don't know, according to the report, no one's living there and they're using the residential property for, to conduct a business, so office use. I don't know if there's trucks going in and out there or not. Is the appellant here to speak to the council?
He wrote us and said he would not be here. He had sick employees.
Okay. Basically, it's, they're using the property for office. Board, it allows you, as the board of adjustment, to allow transitional use between commercial and residential. The staff recommendation is to not approve this request. It's residential, the whole neighborhood is residential in character. Having a commercial use down there, I think it's just a bad precedent. So if the appellant's not here, you happy to try to answer any questions?
I spoke to him. He wrote council. Did we all able to read your letters?
Yes.
All right, yeah. And basically, he, it's like, he lives here. He lives in Hilltop Ranch. And this is just for his mom, I think it's sister, to use, just as like a home, like you work out of your house. He said that he would not, he would write a letter saying that he would never have an 18-wheeler, if an 18-wheeler could fit down Louisa nor come through the back. He did, he was told by someone at City Hall that he could dig a pond and that didn't, that was, that had to come to an halt. And so he filled that in. And he's been trying to get permit for the fence and that's been a challenge. But other than that, he said that he, there would not be any, any trucks going through. There would not be any additional traffic on the street other than one or two, or he said, three in the morning and two after lunch, it was cars. And he's willing to make a commitment to not, and we already have business on there, like Airbnb and another, two of them on there.
So I guess my opinion is this, is that we need to remain consistent. And we had another gentleman try to convert a residential house that was zoned residential to commercial earlier this year. We denied that based on the fact that it is residential. And there's plenty of commercial property in Montgomery. If they want to do business, they can buy commercial property. I know we have a letter from him, but we also have several, at least two letters from neighbors that are asking us not to do it. So just out of straight consistency, residential.
The difference I see is with the one earlier this year, they wanted to modify parking and lights and the building and hold parties and stuff like that. And this one seems to be like, for instance, I have a business out of my home, a residential, my residential property, I have an office.
How long has this home been used as an office?
Offhand, Carol, I don't know.
At least 18 months. We're, at least 18, that's what I'm thinking. And we're positive no one is living there.
I can tell you, I don't think anyone's living there because I've been by there.
Yeah, originally, no.
Because it could be a home-based business.
There are people that go stay the night, like his family members, he told me, if someone lived there.
Yeah, but that wouldn't be residential. They can still go stay the night.
That's true, but I'm definitely opposed to having it become a commercial. Now, where does the commercial part off of Pond Street hit this piece of property?
Well, if you look at the part of the map that's in your packet, there are two separate parcels owned by the same owner.
Okay.
You have a square property that looks like a couple hundred square feet that comes into some commercial on to that larger lot adjacent to the house. That zoning doesn't run with the property law. You have that commercial coming onto the property. I don't think that really has anything to do with what they're requesting, but they are implying a commercial district.
I don't think that has any, to me, for Louisa Street, but along Pond Street, that's a little issue.
Well, because they're using the house as, that's what they're requesting, use the house. Well, the house is not part of that property which the commercial is approaching. Now, if they were to go down and combine those two lots in the one lot, then I think they would have an argument, but at this point, I don't, I don't think that's wise.
Well, overall, the concern, as it was on 149, is still spilling out commercial-type property on a road that we feel like there's challenges already. And there's certainly challenges on Louisa of doing that same thing, so I would.
Louisa is really a, either you're going in or you're going out.
Right, it's not a fair, by any means. And there's already a commercial across the street, you can see there's a commercial sign for that blue oak.
I just wouldn't do it from the standpoint of encouraging more commercial value.
I agree.
So the sign you're referring to, are they doing it illegally?
The sign was never approved. The sign was never approved.
We can't use president of an illegal business and say, well, they're doing it illegally, they can do it too. We need to, what we need to do is commit illegal activity.
And so the sign should be, and that sign should be approved. And certainly, all of that was done without council's approval. But this, there's not going to be any change in aesthetics. There's not going to be a sign in front of here, according to the owner. It's just going to be people coming in to do their job and leave, or an occasional person stay the night. No trucks through the back there that you can see on Pond and no trucks down Louisa. He said trucks can't even fit on Louisa because they're 14 feet high and those car lines, he said, are eight to 12 feet high. I may have had that wrong. But he said, you can't even get a low boy through the backside of Pond. So truly, it'd be just for residential use with an office in the house.
He asked for it to be zoned commercial?
No, he's, he's appealing the decision.
Denial.
Yes, he's appealing our denial to you all. But he's not requesting it is zoned.
Why wasn't it brought to us before when this all, like two years ago when he moved in, or 18 months? Do we know?
The complaint was just made.
I think it's because of relationship itself. I'd like to make a motion to approve item number three as presented.
We have a motion to approve. Item three is presented by Sarah.
To approve it, yeah, to go forward.
Do we have a second?
That would be denying it.
No, I'm not denying it. I'd like to.
She wants to approve.
So you're not.
Request appeal of denial. No, yeah, I'm sorry. I would like to, I mean, I would like to allow the home office to be at 502 Louisa and remain single-family residential for commercial use. There you go.
A second, Ted. We have a motion by Sarah, a second is by Stan. And to be clear, this is to, it's kind of a double-neg.
Allow the business to.
This is to allow the business to function there in the manner in which it is? Is that what we're saying basically? Everybody agree?
With a letter that states no, sorry, I'd like to make it a.
So you have an amendment?
That says no 18-wheeler traffic, just personal cars. Can we state that? We can state that, can't we? Just say there's no in or out.
Is there a time?
Can we, the whole time that he owns it.
Can we, can we start, can we start all over and make a motion all over so it's very clear?
Yeah.
Because it's not very clear.
Let's just grab that.
I can repeat what we already have, as I've written it, which was councilman of country running, due to allow the home office to continue at 502 Louisa and remain a single-family residential, but no 18-wheelers to be operated at that property.
From Pond or Louisa? That's, couldn't state that yet.
Any additions, changes, recommendations?
Stan, you, are you good with the second?
All right. So with that, the motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. We've asked if there's any amendments, there's none. So we're ready to vote. All in favor of approving the action on item three as stated? All in favor?
To allow it.
To allow it, right? Say yes.
Yes.
Anyone oppose, say no.
No.
And by 3-2?
So 3-2, motion carries.
3-2, motion carries.
One thing here is not streaming. You're still not streaming. They just texted me and said it's not streaming.
It's streaming here. I put it showing that it's been operating since 6:02.
So we have a, we have a ability to record still?
Yeah, I'm recording audio.
Okay. All right, moving on. Item four, consideration possible action by the Montgomery City Council acting as the zoning board of adjustment regarding a requested appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission action denying the use of synthetic lawn at 504 Carolina Street in the Historic Preservation District.
Thank you, Mayor, 504 Caroline Street. I'm just going to read what I have in my general brief. It's the best way I understand what's going on out there. So this property's been under renovation for some time. Any improvements to property in the Historic Preservation District would require planning and zoning approval prior to that would be done. On September 5th and then continuing on in October on the 3rd, the planning commission meeting, the petitioner presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission seeking approval for certain improvements to the property. AstroTurf was requested but was not approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The petitioner ordered her to subsequently put in AstroTurf on the side yard of the property without, obviously without prior approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We notified the property owner of the violation and his right to appeal this to you all as the board of adjustments, and he has decided to do that, so that's why he's recording it now, seeking approval, I guess, for the AstroTurf.
This is kind of a tough and, tough one, and it's got a lot of moving parts to it. So I say, you know, when I heard on the planning and zoning, the reasons for, you know, the problem, it was a spot that was approved and the planning and zoning felt like that's what they were envisioning. Then to find out the whole thing was covered. So the very next day, I went and looked at it. I wanted to grab my putter and some balls and go drill a hole. It was nice. It wasn't what I was expecting. You know, I was expecting some gaudy-looking, you know, material, but I felt like it was, you know, nice and attractive. Then I get a prominent business owner encouraged me by a letter, and I don't know if y'all got it as well, but he said he fully supports everything that that, that has been done at that corner. In other words, there's the big picture that says, and it's even in the packet, here's your before and here's your after. Aesthetically and functionally, I don't see a problem with it. With that said, you know, we want to try to support the idea of continuity. I get that. I truly get that. But I, given the fact that he specifically spoken that you can't grow any foliage, so if you got this massive tree and there's no foliage, then what are you going to have when it rains? Mud. And then I think he did a good thing. He took a picture of the community center, and we all know what happens when it's mud and get mussy, messy over there on the first Saturday of every month. They lay down some gaudy-looking AstroTurf just to function. So I can see both sides of it. I wouldn't, I don't think it's a tragic thing either way, and I know we want to try to be consistent, and I support that. But given this situation, it looks really nice and the whole, the whole corner looks so much better. I hate to see an undue, as it's called, an undue stress put on this owner who's come in and put so many thousands of dollars into improving that lot, because it was an eyesore, a non-functional eyesore. And so that's my opinion.
Well, there's a lot of things to be taken into consideration on that, too. The worst thing was that they were denied, but they did it anyway. But the other thing is, to me, I went by it like you did and looked at it. Conservation of water maintains the same look constantly, and it just takes, you know, a blower to make it even look better. There's, to me, there's a lot of pluses, but the big downside was the fact that they probably should have asked for a reversal prior to putting it down.
So I spoke to him and he went to out of town after the PNC meeting, and his contractor put it down. And when he got back into town, he didn't know it until he found out through the city that it had been done. That's what I'm told. I'm just letting you know.
Well, sometimes that, things like that can happen. So, but still, the buck stops with him, so.
That's right.
Agreed, I'm with you on that. But I think he spent over a million dollars, the property looks fantastic. It looks a lot better than it ever has.
You hate to report bad behavior? Is that what we're agreeing with?
Yeah, I really hated to see that little.
I talked to you about this a couple of weeks ago. Did Ms. Tilly ever swing by there and cite him? Ms. Tilly, did you ever write a citation for the AstroTurf on the corner of Caroline?
No, sir. No, sir. No actual citation was ever written on it. I was told to hold off because I was informed that the director of planning and development had stated that we don't have an avenue for it, although we do. So while it's waiting and it's in some kind of limbo of whatever process it is that we're supposed to follow, I did not write that citation. Plus, it's a citation that would have been issued by the building official and by, not by the code enforcement officer, according to our ordinance. Violation against a planning commission decision requires the citation by the building official.
Okay. So something needs to explain to me why there was never a citation.
Oh, that was me. Somebody, Dave, called me and told me about them putting in the turf. It was Friday, 2, 3 o'clock in the afternoon. I was totally waiting. We can contact them the next week, give an NOLB. And that's really the process, give an NOLB, note the violation is, give them time to take it out. If they don't, then we can send them to court. If they're going to apply petition at all for relief or any other law, they'll stay in enforcement action until you guys make a decision. Now, if you guys come out of here with a denial, then I'll contact the owner, give them some time to take the turf out. If he doesn't, then we'll send them to court.
Okay. So the biggest thing I want to avoid is any, we'll ask for forgiveness, right? Because that's a very slippery road.
Yep.
I'm, I'm in agreement 100% with, does it look better? Did the guy spend a lot of money? Absolutely. But there's a certain way we have to do things. And doing it the way you want and then hoping you get it done is not the right practice. So I was really hoping for a citation on that, pay the fine and move, go on your merry way, but.
Is there a way, and this may sound weird, at some point in time, we have to get far more consistent when something that is documented to be said by planning and zoning, somebody breaches that? And we, you know, we talked about having that type of consistency. Is, is there a way to approve that but go ahead and enforce right now? You said you would do X. You know, we think, yes, it looks good, but you didn't fulfill what you said you would type of thing, which is what we tried to do with another owner off of 149 earlier. You said one thing and then you came to ask him for a different one. So we get all these inconsistencies, so give me some advice here.
I'm not sure what you're asking, but as far as process, you know, I listened back to what y'all said at the prior meeting about having somebody come after planning and zoning and make sure they're tracking that stuff. So we've got a process now set up, and we're going to need to do that. But it's, it's going to be the same. You can't, you have, you have to notice the person, you have to give some time to remediate.
Okay.
Then that's when you, you send them to court. At that point, it's out of our hands. It's up to the court to do that.
Right.
Including the fines. The court can decide on whether they want to issue whatever the maximum is in our ordinance or whatever, whatever they decide they want to do is up to the court. I, I think that we, because our ordinance is a little antiquated, the language isn't all that great, I think we need to work on that, obviously. But, yeah, I mean, enforcement is just one of those things, we're just going to have to stay on top of it.
Okay.
So when stuff comes out of the planning commission, we'll, we'll track that and, but it's, it's not just a matter of stroking tickets. It's, it's a process, and it takes time.
Yeah.
It takes noticing, and it's just, it's, it's not very simple.
Okay.
For the PNC, is there some type of, for like, when I said on EDC, we had a manual that we could go through that said that, so is there a manual that the, the directors have of what they can and can't do?
For the planning and zoning commission?
Yes.
I mean, if you look at your ordinance, I really just wonder.
No, no, is there a specific manual for, for, for PNC?
A manual, that would tell them what.
The guy, any.
Their guidelines?
Guidelines or whatever.
I guess like how you did policies for council, then you could do that, like the ordinances for PNC or in EDC. Their book of what they go, that they, their guidelines in which they should consider when approving or not approving or, I don't know. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
Do they have like a book that tells, I mean, I'm sure there's books that are put out on the municipal.
No, that's their bible. Does the city have something that they issue them?
We have, we have the ordinance, that's all we have to go off of. And really, that's, that's not, and I brought this up the last planning commission meeting, that's putting them in a bad position because it doesn't, doesn't really give them a lot of teeth and a lot of, a lot of criteria to make a nexus between the ordinance and what decision they're coming back with. So it puts them in a bad position, it's confusing to the applicant, it's confusing to the people that want to do business here. So those are all things that we need to work on, but, I mean, enforcement, yes, that's a big component of everything, but it's, I, I don't know if that's going to be the answer to all of these. I think working with these property owners and trying to get compliance is going to be key. Because, and I don't want to get into a big discussion about it here because there's legal issues that go about, but we're exposing ourselves to liability by pursuing some of these things, the window, more pursuing. So we could, we could be going to the municipal court, well, they're going to look at our process and our past practices, and they're going to find an attorney that's going to take this to the civil court, and then, then we're going to be fighting that as well.
So then the only way to go forward is to redo our ordinances to get the teeth or whatever we're trying to accomplish or less vagueness? And then from that point forward, we can?
That would be the ideal situation, but obviously, there's going to be that gap between now and the time they end their ordinance. So what do you do?
That's kind of what I was asking. It, it, it does seem that there needs to be a gap between.
But here's the thing, lack of law does not make a precedent, right? It just doesn't. Right? Lack of clarification is not precedent, right? It's just not.
I'm not, I'm not following.
So to say that, oh, because of decisions that we've had to make in the past because our ordinance were bad, does not make precedent.
I agree with you. But I think there's an argument to be made civilly if they go into court and say, hey, they've been approving all this stuff for this long, and now they're coming back and handing me on this? I think there's an argument to be made.
Yes.
And I'm not saying this, and this is philosophy, it's not just Montgomery. We have a lot of work to do. And I don't know if right now is the right time to be pursuing some of this stuff.
Okay, gotcha.
Is anybody from this address here tonight?
I do not know. Is anybody from 504 Caroline? There you go.
Are you the owner?
I am. If, yeah, if you want to call the pony, it'd please your case, or. Well, I, I think you've got the.
Let me just do it from the podium ponies. Thank you.
My name is Tom Cox, Jr. I'm the president and CEO of Grace Point Homes. We bought 504 Caroline, I think it was probably a year and a half ago. I could speak to, you know, not saying this is the right way, but the way I went about my business was I hired a contractor and I asked him specifically, no disrespect, I said, does this include you handling the city? And his answer was yes. And he had called me and said there was a, there was a hangup on the turf. They wanted to see what it looked like. I said, well, great, let's put all the structure in, which included the fencing and the planting and all that kind of stuff, so you could see that the turf area was not really going to impact any of the sightlines from, from the front of the house. I was hunting, maybe I had bad service or, but I hung up the phone and then, you know, the next day I got a call from Dave McCorkindale saying, you put the frickin' turf in, what, what, what happened? As I called my, my contractor, he said, I thought you said, put it in anyway. It was a, it was a horrible mistake. I, 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 you know, I apologized that it was handled that way. I certainly don't conduct my business that way. I've been in construction for over 30 years. My family has a, a good name in this industry. I put my heart and soul into 504. Very excited about how it's turned out. We start finally moving in some of the furniture tomorrow. We were able to, you know, I don't know if y'all went in there when it was kind of a hoarder.
Delapidated.
We're all over on earth. I think we found 15 pieces of furniture that was from the period when it was constructed. They were completely having refurbished. We refurbished the entire staircase. We actually, when we were digging the, the walkpath, we found the original pavers there too. So when you go over there and you can see, we've got about a, about a four-by-five-foot area that's got all the, all the old, so anyway, I love the historical part of it. I won't bore you with that. But that, that's, that's my story. I can't say it any, any better than that. I do apologize. I was not trying to take advantage of any situation. We've, we filed for every permit that's, that we needed to. I can tell you that when you are dealing with the PNC and trying to interpret what you need to bring before them, it is not very clear. It does require, it does need some sustenance to where you can kind of go, okay, well, in these areas, what, what do I do? What are my options? It just basically says, you could go talk to, you know, the three people at PNC and they can interpret. at P and Z and they can interpret whether that's an acceptable remedy or use or whatever. And it has nothing to do with histori, historical period or anything like that, you know, probably random.
I appreciate what you've done with the property. It looks so much better than it ever has. And yes, it was dilapidated inside. The water was going on and awful. And I recently was in Dallas last week, and a lot of the homes in Allen Park, the park cities where I was, is that turf. Now, I, I like to go by the rules. So when you're saying no, I appreciate no being the no. But at the same time, like what you've done is beautiful. I appreciate you investing in this town.
Yes, sir.
I, I really do. And I, it's become a showplace. So kudos to you. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. Any other thoughts, comments?
Jerry, do we have a specific ordinance that says he can't do anything but grass?
Nope.
The ordinance basically gives the planning and zoning commission authority to kind of regulate whatever improvements they want to make on that property. It really doesn't talk about maintenance purposes anymore. It just says exterior improvements.
Okay. All right. You can see the recommendation there has the word uphold or overturn. So if someone's ready to make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
What were you going to say?
Oh, sorry.
Are you ready? I'm sorry. Okay, Casey, go ahead.
Excited.
I'd make the motion to overturn the denial, the commission's denial of the synthetic loan.
Now, you can do that.
Motion by Casey?
You can second, I'll stand. I second that.
Oh, Sarah, yeah, okay. So second is...
So that is to approve.
Second is to approve. Which is the same as overturn denial. Just to be clear. All right. The motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of overturning the denial on item four, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. And the motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Item five is some very brief quarterly investment reports. It's not so brief, but for quarter one, two, and three, 2023. Thank you.
Our finance director, Mary Ann Hall.
These are, investment reports are required to be done quarterly. Just due to circumstances and changes, we were behind in completing these quarterly investment reports, but you are caught up. So these three reports are presented to you this evening. Essentially a housekeeping item, just keeping track of bank balances and interest earned. You have any questions?
No, actually.
They have to be approved.
Seems to be pretty solid overall. It's a lot of reading, but overall, it's pretty sound.
Yes.
Return on investments.
Make a motion to approve the quarterly investment reports as submitted.
I second.
Motion by Casey. Second is by Cheryl. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item five as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. We'll approve item five. Item six, consideration possible action on an ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Montgomery, Texas Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligations, Series 2024, levying an ad valorem tax and pledging certain surplus revenues in support of the certificates, approving an official statement, paying agent registrar agreement and other agreements relating to the sale and issuance of the certificates, and ordaining other matters related to the issuance of the certificates.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just go out and give a quick follow-up. We discussed the needed water and sewer infrastructure improvements that we have to do this next year. In our many bunch of workshops, we discussed the mechanisms, mechanisms available to finance that. When we decided that certificates of obligation were the best avenue for borrowing money and issuing the debt. At your regular meeting on October 24, 2023, we passed a resolution to move forward with the certificate of obligation process. The ordinance before you tonight, again, is the final step. James Gilli, our financial advisor, is here to talk about the bids and the sale of those certificates of obligation. And Alan Petrow is our bond counsel and city attorney as well. So he is also here to answer any questions you might have. But I think maybe the other ordinance in front of you that has all the blood still in it. So I'll turn it over to James if he wants to hit anything, or if you guys have any questions with him.
Okay.
And then maybe Alan, if he's got anything.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Again, for the record, my name is James Gilli with U.S. Capital Advisors as the city's financial advisor. This morning, we took bids in a competitive auction-type sale from underwriters across the country. We advertised the sale last week. This morning at 10:00 AM, bids were due, and we received a total of six bids. And the best bid went to Raymond James and Associates. They submitted an initial trunche's cost of 3.679370. And the tabulation of the bids is shown on the first page in your packet. As you can see, we had responses from investors from four different states across the country. The second page shows a graphical distribution of the bids. And this is, this is what we like to see with a competitive bond sale, where these underwriters are competing against each other. You'll see that there's a cluster of four, four bids around 3, 3.85%. And the two best bids, Raymond James and, Raymond James and RW Baird, those are the outliers. So that tells us that the market thought that the price for your bonds was right around 3.85, 3.9. But Raymond James really wanted to win this, win the bond sale. So they, they submitted an aggressive bid to the city's benefit. So the, the total spread between the high and low bid was almost a quarter of a percentage point. So very happy with the results of the sale. The, Raymond James offered to purchase the bonds at a net premium to the city. A portion of that premium went to pay the issuance cost, but also to reduce the borrowing requirement. So while we offered $3.5 million in, in bonds for sale, the final par amount will be $3,440,000. But at closing, assuming council approves the ordinance, the transaction should close on or about January 16th. The city will get the full $3.5 million to spend on its projects. So the rest of the packet contains the final debt service numbers. The bonds will be callable beginning March 1st of 2033. The packet also contains a rating report from Standard and Poor's. I'd like to, I'd encourage you to read through it at, at your leisure. It's, it, it highlights the city's strong finances and the strong economies as part of the reason for the double A rating.
Say that a little bit louder. We were, we were impressed when you did the analysis. I was impressed that we were well above the average. And this is a good, this was a good investment for us to, to make.
Yes.
Just to only say a few people.
Right. Again, I would like to commend council and city staff on your prudent budget, budgetary management, maintaining those strong reserves. And it's a, it's a great accomplishment for a city of this size. So I respect your time. I'll, I'll keep it short, but I'll open, entertain any questions that you might have. If there's any questions about the ordinance, I'll turn it over to Mr. Petrow.
You have made this, you've been in every meeting extremely prepared, wealth of information, the good and the bad, and easy to read information. So thank you for that. And I know you're driving in from Austin each time. So I know it's not an easy drive as well. So thank you again and appreciate your help with this.
It's my pleasure. It's a beautiful drive.
It is. It is.
Nope. A number of workshops did help so that we didn't have to absorb so much information at one time. So process as well is really good. Any questions, council? All right, just the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Montgomery, Texas Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2024.
Second?
Second is by Stan. First is by Carol. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approval of item six as read, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no.
Who said no?
Oh, sorry. I said no. I didn't mean, I said yes, and then I said no. I mean, yes, that's not, it's my, my gosh. I was like zoning out. I was thinking of something else. I apologize. I mean, yes. I'm so sorry.
That was weird.
She went through all of that and then him and then he just... I know. And I said, no, so I don't, I'm kidding. So sorry.
I thought Joe Biden had come in.
I had it, I had it pop in my mind. I apologize.
All right. So item six approved, is approved 5 to 0.
So just so everybody understands the process from here, you don't get the money to borrow.
Right.
So, so the sale's approved. We'll take the ordinance and all the supporting documents. We have to package it together, send it off to the Attorney General's Office. Their Public Finance Division has to review our transcribed proceedings and give their opinion saying everything is kosher. That process takes roughly, a little less than 30 days. So you schedule closing out about 30 days from now. And on January 12?
I think it's the 16th.
16th is what I read, Ben.
January 16th. So just over 30 days, we'll actually have the closing where funds will be wired to your account and the bonds will be formally issued.
Okay. Thank you for your help. All right. So item six is approved. Going to item seven, consideration of possible action on an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery, Texas, amending its municipal budget for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, containing findings and a Texas Open Meetings Act clause, and providing an immediate effective date.
All right, Mayor and Council. My guess is that this adjustment, adjusting entry probably looks much different than what you're used to seeing. In discussion with our auditors, the reason for doing it by line item in this fashion is really a benefit to us in the future for budget planning purposes, because we will be able to actually see how the year ended. Okay? The snapshot that is at the back of that Exhibit A, as well as on your cover sheet, is probably a little bit more similar to what you're used to seeing, where it's by fund. Okay? So all of those details I provide to you because that's what will be going on in the financial system. The result of that will be what's in this little snapshot. Okay? The piece is to point out to you, or that I'd like to point out to you, is that your general fund, the Fund 150, the Montgomery Pid, a grant account, court technology, hotel occupancy, and the police asset account are all ending the year with a surplus. These are based on unaudited numbers. We anticipate that that surplus will remain intact after audit. The funds that have a deficit are going to be your capital projects, water and sewer, debt service, and court security. Because of an entry that was required to be made by the, from the auditors, there was a bank transfer in fiscal year '22 that had happened between the capital projects fund and the water sewer fund. But the entry, while the, the money moved from bank account to bank account, the entry was never recorded on the general ledger. So we were, we were required to make that entry this year, which has impacted that number a little, I would say falsely, because it's not actually something that was spent or earned in this year. Okay? The other thing to point out is that in your capital projects fund and your water sewer fund and in debt service, you had an item that was on the books in your budget for use of surplus funds. So the way that that is put in for budgeting purposes shows that you will have enough revenue to cover your expenses. We cannot actually make that revenue entry because that revenue has already been stated in a previous year. So at this point in the process, we zero that out. It will become an entry from the auditors that will reduce fund balance to the extent that's needed once they audit everything. The piece that I wanted to point out is that in your capital projects fund, we anticipated using $1,138,000 in surplus to fund those projects. However, we anticipate that only about $370,000 will be needed from that surplus. So there will be a savings on the surplus that was believed to be needed. Okay? The same is true in 300, in water sewer. It was estimated that $350,000 from surplus would be needed. We anticipate that that will be more, slightly over $100,000. Okay? So that's primarily because of savings in expenses or an increase in revenues. Debt service, there was surplus funds there. We do anticipate needing about just under $1,800 of additional surplus to meet the needs in debt service. All right. Now, what questions do you have for me in this process?
So based on what you just said, there's, there's an extra $1 million back in surplus.
We are putting a nice hefty...
Yep, that's good.
Amount back into surplus this year.
Good.
Do you?
Go ahead, sorry.
One other question is, I know that surplus account is a little strange. I know we were behind on our general fund based on our ordinance. We're supposed to...
Reserve policy?
Yeah.
Yeah. We should, we should be...
We'll be back to...
We should be back on track and a little bit above. Yep.
Important to know, yeah.
That's what I was looking for.
It's the goal. It's looking good.
Do you anticipate any more adjustments like this moving forward? Do you think you have found any gaps or holes or inconsistencies or bad practice?
We will always have these adjustments. You will get one of these type of adjustments every single year. This will come to you every year because it is your year-end cleanup. It is essentially considered a housekeeping item. So whether it's me or some other finance person, they should be bringing you a year-end budget amendment.
And I understand that. I mean, like where we, we transferred the money, but there is nothing, there, there's no paper trail saying that that's what that is for, like those kind of things. I totally understand that this will fluctuate.
I don't think we have anything in this year's budget for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we addressed those during our budget planning sessions. So...
So whatever we encounter moving forward will be just normal business?
Things we couldn't anticipate.
Sure.
Any other questions?
So we're ready for the auditors?
We are actually in audit this week. So after this housekeeping item happens, I get to go in and make all of these changes to these 400 and some lines, and then get them the trial balance and this information, and we continue to move forward. But yeah, we've been pulling all of our items on our needs list for the past couple of weeks and uploading that information to them. And I've been in communication with them this week. So they're in it.
Thank you.
Thanks for watching.
Thank you so much.
So Marion, I know you came into this midsummer to a rat's nest, ball of yarn. You're welcome. And you dug through a lot of stuff and you've done a lot of work. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, ever, motion?
Make the motion to consider the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Montgomery amending its municipal budget for the fiscal year 2022, 2023, appropriating the various amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A containing endings and a Texas Open Meetings Act clause, and providing an immediate effective date.
Second, babe.
Motion's by Sarah, second's by Cheryl. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving Item 7 as stated, say yes.
Yes, yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. And we will approve Item 7. Item 8, public hearing on new water and sewer tap fees, and it is 6:53, and we'll open that hearing up at this time. Anyone here to speak regarding new water and sewer tap fees? All right, no one is here to discuss, so it's 6:53, and we are back into session. Item 9, consideration of possible action regarding amending Chapter 90, Sections 90 through 60, 90-66 and 90-67 of the Code of Ordinances.
Mayor and Council, good evening. So, it's real simple, with the new utility operations contract, the price of, the price to have the work performed has gone up $300. So, water taps and sewer taps combined went up $300. What this does is, it still keeps us putting the same amount of money in the bank, so to say, for us. We're keeping $1,700 total, it just costs us $300 more to have them perform, so we need to adjust accordingly. So, we did add the verage to keep the irrigation taps at cost, that was a policy that started back Jack Gage days, to help promote irrigation taps, but now it's in writing. We also included verage for the, if it falls under impact fees, so there was nothing in there before. If it falls under impact fees, we don't want to double dip and charge someone impact fees and charge them a tap fee that's more than cost. So now that will, if it's just simply setting a meter in place, and that's all it will cost them, is the cost of the meter, so.
So how much is an irrigation tap now, to get a irrigation meter?
To get one right now, it is roughly 1,100, 1,150, I believe.
And that'll go up 300, you said?
No, that, so the, the water tap itself has gone up, so H2O's water tap price, or by ordinance, was $900 for the tap, H2O's, I'm sorry, haze cost for a three-quarter inch tap is 1,700. So they're backwards on their, well, not backwards, I mean, they reversed on their fees. H2O charged a lot more for sewer taps than they did water, which is not really normal in the utility world. Haze charges more for their water than they do their sewer. There's more parts involved with water, there's brass parts, a lot, you know, it makes more sense to charge more for the water.
So what are the tap fees, Mike?
Sorry?
What are the tap fees?
Currently, so currently, the tap fees are 900 for water, 900 plus the cost of the meter, and then 2,600 for sewer. We are proposing just to change them both to 1,900 even. It's, it's not the same, double the cost that we had on the last version, but it keeps the same amount of money in the bank, so.
And we haven't changed our fees since 2016?
Yeah, it's been a while.
Okay, any other questions? If not, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance amendment as presented.
Second.
Motion's by Casey, second's by Sarah. The motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving Items 9, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. We will approve Item 9. Take it. Item 10, consider amendment to the personnel policy compensation section to remove cost of living allowance restrictions.
Thank you, Mayor. Apologize for last minute, you had a long PDF in there, you guys couldn't see the strikeout. Basically, it's housekeeping, if you ever come all back and we were approving raises or considering raises, the council approved cost of living increases for all employees except for the executive level department heads. The current policy states that if you do a core increase, all employees get it. So this just strikes that requirement of logic before we could increase to certain places. So, again, just housekeeping, a lot of paperwork for a moment of life, but I recommend approval.
Okay, recommendation is to amend the personnel policy as proposed. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to amend the personnel policy as proposed, approve amendment.
Okay, second is by Stan. The motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving Item 10 as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. We will approve Item 10 as stated. Item 11, consideration of possible action on an ordinance of the City of Montgomery, Texas repealing Chapter 62 offenses, Article 2, minors, Division 2 juvenile curfew, Section 62-40 through 62-45 of the City of Montgomery Code of Ordinances in response to House Bill 1819, effective September 1, 2023, providing for repealing savings and severability clauses, and providing for an effective get date of this ordinance.
Chief. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the mayor's read there, on the regular session of the Texas Legislature, they passed and adopted Bill 1819, which in response to Bill 1819 is effective September 1 of 2023, repealing the curfew, which under this ordinance in Montgomery, it's ordinance, Chapter number 62. So we're asking you to approve that.
All right, so you have to, yeah, what are we doing here?
You're repealing the curfew.
So your code contains a curfew, the legislature changed the law, it says you can't have a curfew, so we're repealing the curfew out of the code.
Gotcha.
So you.
No curfew.
No curfew. Those kids can be out. Why is that?
I know, we're all thinking the same thing.
Huh?
It's a, those are other things like the government code 418, that you can deal with later on down the line in case of emergencies and things of that.
We were part of putting that curfew in.
Ma'am?
We changed that, we put that curfew in just a few years ago, based on recommendation, and thought it was good, because it gives you a reason to pull kids over that might be out way late.
And I mean, you can still pull kids over and talk to them. If you, if you got a juvenile or anybody out that late, you can talk to them. You necessarily can't do the things that you could do under a curfew, but you can talk with them. But that hasn't changed.
Make a motion, we approve Item 11 as written.
Motion's by Stan, do we have a second?
Second.
Second I'll take from Sarah. The motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving Item 11 as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. And we will approve Item 11. Item 12, consider adoption of a resolution for the City of Montgomery to join the Houston-Gowson Area Council.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this was on the last agenda, we just worry about the cost, it's $200 a year, anyone for us to join, our recommendations are clear.
We figured out who's going to be the one responsible going? Or is it going to be like a round robin?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I would like to make these meetings if I can make them. If not, the mayor or the board of council, if you want to step up, I'd be great.
Okay.
We have to see.
Just making sure that we had.
Yeah, we're already active with that. We have a grand tour happening this Friday, or we're going to spend three hours there. And then there's a, let's see, Sarah and Stan will be going with me in representation of the Transportation Advisory Committee, as well as representing the city's needs. There's two mayors that are, kind of are gathering information from cities like ourselves. One is in Folscher, let's see.
Wharton.
Is it? Well, the lady's from Wharton, but this mayor is from, I think, Folscher and Waller, or someplace similar to us, right? So it's about forming relationship with similar-minded cities who have similar problems that we do, and establishing a web there. So whoever represents the city from whatever capacity, it's just a matter of keeping our name out there and staying prominent. But we will be taking a tour of the city, and there's people coming from a good ways away to try to help us with that Friday, so I think it's worth $200.
I understand, my understanding is Gary's going to be the chauffeur, so Chief, if you see, no blinkers being used, or, I'm just kidding. I'd like to approve the resolution for the City of Montgomery to join the HGAC Council.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Casey. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. I think this is a wise move. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. We will approve Item 12. Item 13, a resolution of the City of Montgomery, Texas, amending its policy for investment of municipal funds and the investment strategies contained therein.
All right, Mayor and Council, this is a housekeeping item. Every year, your investment policy is adopted, and this year, we need to change it so that your current finance person is listed as the investment officer.
That's you. Just the formality. Entertain a motion.
I motion that Item 13 be approved as written.
Second.
Motion's by Stan, second's by Cheryl. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving Item 13 as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. We'll approve Item 13.
Who was the second?
Second was by Cheryl. Item 14, consideration of possible action on the acceptance of a hydrological report as performed by Wet Rock Groundwater Services LLC, and release that the city engineer to proceed with the design of the water plant number two improvements as originally authorized at the October 10, 2023 meeting of the City Council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In your packet is the final hydrogeological report from Wet Rock Groundwater Services. Y'all authorized this a couple of months ago to be completed. This was required in order for us to be able to get a permit amendment from the Lone Star Groundwater Conservation District. It's also required for the redrilling of well number two, as well as looking forward into putting another well on the west side of town at water plant four in the future. So we went ahead and had Wet Rock evaluate all of the wells, both existing and proposed, to, to look at the, the demand that we are projecting to be meeting. So they did their analysis, and looked at well spacing, other wells in the area, the projected drawdown on the aquifers, and any kind of other impact on the aquifers. They did not find any concerns, no, no necessary impact on the aquifer or viability of the wells, and they did not have any issues with the demands that are being requested. So, at this time, the report will be submitted to the Lone Star Groundwater Conservation District, which is the final document that they need for the permit amendment. And then as a reminder, whenever we were authorized for the water plant number two improvements project, it was subject to this report being presented to you, which is the second part of your, your action item tonight, is the request to go ahead and release us to begin design on the water plant two improvements project.
Did you read this report?
I did, from cover to cover. It's, so it's good, it's, it's really nice that they, they did all the wells, and then our future well solution, not to do this anytime soon. They did a great job, it's very thorough. The Jasper looks really good, so.
Thank you.
Your concern, as many of us, is also the overtaxing of any one given well going through, and you're, you're good with that?
Absolutely. Like I said, the Jasper looks, that's the, the, the formation we want to be in as the best water, and according to the report, we're golden.
Good to go. Good deal. All right, no other questions, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the report and release, excuse me, accept the hydrological report and release the city engineers to proceed with the design of water well plant number two.
Motion by Casey, do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll take Carol's as a second. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving Item 14 as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. We will approve Item 14 as stated.
Thank you.
Now get off your feet and rest for a while. Under departmental reports, Item 15, November 2023 Utility Report.
This usually is under consent, but I pulled up your security set of questions. I'm happy to present on this, other than the data.
Okay. Any questions? If not, we'll move on to Item 16, Utility Operations Report.
Evening, Mayor and Council. So, we're on an in-between month right now, so H2O's all over with us, but this is the October monthly report, provided by them. And then next month, Haze will be presenting the November and December report, which is what we do every year. So, I have the report, it's, I'm not going to go through it like Jacob did. High points are 65% of permitted capacity on the sewer plant, and our accountability was at 95%, but I'd be happy to try to answer any questions on it that you may have.
Haze is renting a building in town, right? Are they operating offices in town?
Well, their office is on 105, out, yeah, it's past April, Sam.
Okay.
Yeah.
Questions? All right. Thank you, Mike. Hope it works. Mike?
Back again.
Back again, that was fast.
All right, you have the report in front of you, be happy to answer any questions you have on it.
What's happening over at Prairie is that, there's a dumpster, is that the remediation that we approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Not that it's a huge deal, but just for expediencing, can you, like, you note that activated slash deactivated 12, can you differentiate that for us in the future? Just like, here's how many we shut on, or deactivated, or something?
Sure.
That, just a quick look type deal?
Yeah. I mean, it's usually about the same, because it's, there's rarely a case where we turn one off and we don't eventually turn it back on, but yeah, we can, we can separate those.
Kind of keep it.
Not a problem.
Not in total. All right, any questions?
Have we seen any interest in irrigation taps after this last summer?
Haven't heard of one in a while. I couldn't tell you when the last one was, but it's, it's been a while.
You put the advertisement out through the water bill, right? Or I saw it somewhere.
We've, yeah, we've, I mean, we've done numerous things. We've put it on Facebook, we've.
Yeah, probably saw it on Facebook.
Yeah. Yeah.
For my, like, the spring, like, do a big push, another push for it, because I think, so we don't go back against, I think there were some issues with the water bills, but also, people don't understand that there's two taps. And I think if we do like a big PSA maybe the first part of the year, to say, hey.
I think my gut tells me it just boils down to upfront cost. I mean, it's, it's, they're going to save money once they hit, if they hit a certain threshold, but it's still that upfront cost of having to have it done.
The thing is, is if we show them their savings, literally, these people that come in here with $800, seven and $800 water bills, they pay for the tap in three months.
Yeah.
That's true. I think just making them aware.
Aware, yep.
Whether they act on it or not is their decision, like anything else, but I think it would be good.
It's always recommended, whenever someone calls in for a high water bill, and, you know, I don't know what the percentage is, I'm just guessing it, it's a high percentage of times that we find out that it is their irrigation. I know Kristen always recommends, you know, hey, this is, this is what we can offer, you know, we do, you can separate it out, put it on irrigation tab. So, any phone calls always result in them being notified.
I'm calling a $500 bill, though, and you're telling me I gotta spend $1,200 more?
Exactly. It was upfront cost.
If we, is there, do we have to change our, add an ordinance or policy to make the payment, three or four payments added to the water bill?
Like, advertise it out?
Yeah.
That would be a utility billing question, I find.
But we, does the city have the pocket?
My thought is, is if they do it now, and the water bill is cheap.
Agreed.
It's paid for by the time.
Get ahead of it. Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Like installments.
Yeah.
Yeah, three or four installments to knock it out.
Let me look into that. I'll look into that.
Alan, have you seen other cities do that? Is that, is that normal practice? I mean, not that we're normal, but.
Well, the, the policy allows me to, 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 to pay if someone's out.
Good, okay.
My recommendation would be, that would be layaway, not.
I was going to say, layaway, but yeah.
Lay it all first, then you do it.
Pay my way away.
But just an option, because it is, it's hard cost.
Absolutely.
So, if we could split it out, so it's, you know, hey, you've been paying the $500 water bill for five months, if you just paid a little, for three more, or whatever it pays. takes, and now next year, you're gonna have three more of it.
Yeah.
So...
I'll take a look at that, I'll take a look.
I think it's a good idea, Casey.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Item 18, October, November 2023 Monthly Court Report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have the October report for you. The collections for citations were 212. The revenue was $34,210.67 for October. And for November, citations were 162, and the revenue was $36,731.64. Do you have any questions for the municipal court? Thank you. Have a Merry Christmas, guys.
Merry Christmas.
Item 20.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah?
Item 20, Finance Report for the month end, October 31, 2023.
What about the number 19?
Didn't you want two months' reports?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Didn't you want two months of reports? You know, she has one.
I skipped right over the city engineer. Do we have any engineers present? Absolutely. Wouldn't be a meeting without engineers present, no doubt. Go ahead, item 19.
All right, going through our report, so Water Plant Number Two and the Lone Star Groundwater Conservation District Permit Amendment, items one and two, those are both related to the hydro geological report that you just approved. Going to Flagship Boulevard, they are finalizing up their punch list items that we identified at their final inspection. We're also working through final quantities with them to get that all buttoned up and prepare a final pay estimate. Jumping down to the next page, item five is the Sanitary Sewer Rehab Phase One. I'm sure y'all are all familiar with the work that they're doing on 105 right now, so they are continuing with CIPP lining, as well as pre-televising before they go in, they're doing point repairs, so they are actively working and continuing to do.
Yes, they are.
They are.
On Houston Street.
Yep.
Phase two of that project is the pipe bursting to enlarge the pipe along 105 and then going up towards College Street. That project was put on hold until funding is available for construction, and that project was one of the ones that we had originally identified for the CO. Lift Station Tenneb improvements, we are bidding right now, or the project's advertising, we're planning on receiving bids for this project on January 10th, and we'll bring those to the second January council meeting. The Old Plannersville Waterline Extension, we had to get some easements from MISD, so we're coordinating on getting those easements finalized and sent over to MISD, as well as going through county review for that project specifically. The other project along Old Plannersville is the Force Main, that one is also actively bidding right now. We'll receive bids on January 10th, on the same day as Lift Station Tenneb, and bring those to the second January council meeting. Jumping down to page three, item 12, your TPDS Permit Amendment, we did receive some correspondence from the TCEQ on the proposed F limits, and we're gonna be issuing our response tomorrow to those, for both of those. And then the Buffalo Springs Drive Road Reconstruction Project is continuing in design, will be submitting for agency review this month. And then the Signal, we are still awaiting plan, final plans from Tech dot. We are planning to bid the 90% set. There is not usually a whole lot that changes between 90 and 100% on the Signal plans, and this will give the contractor a chance to go ahead and start getting equipment ordered and things like that. So we'll be looking to also bid that, and receive bids in January.
So before you move on on that traffic light, are we still waiting for the two traffic engineers to look at, to, or do we have to do a, did we do a new traffic study?
We're getting a proposal for a new signal analysis. Tech dot is really holding their ground on the one that we had done is not adequate. And so we are, we're getting proposals to do a new one. In the meantime, we're gonna go ahead and bid the 90% plans. The difference between what they would release would be a flashing yellow versus a red, yellow, green, that's a programming difference, not necessarily a hardware difference.
Okay. How long does it take to do a traffic study once we finally get it, get it going?
Well, we discuss those in 30 days.
30 days?
30 days.
30 days, okay.
So all of this is trying to keep in line with the schedule that we promised to Home Depot and keep the city in compliance with the agreement. Plenty of views are listed, a couple ones that I want to highlight are the Red Bird Meadows Phase One A Water Sanitary and Drainage. We received those plans and sent back comments. I'm expecting a revised set any day now. And same with Lift Station Number One, we received their revised lift station plans, and we'll be sending those back this week. Going down to the next page, plot reviews, Montgomery Bend Section Three and Four Preliminary Plots were approved at the Planning and Zoning Commission last week, and so we're expecting their WSND plans to come in any day now. Speaking of Montgomery Bend, they are in active construction and continuing to go. They're working on their tie-in at Tech dot as well as the Lift Station, and both of those have to be complete and the Lift Station operational before we'll consider approving the rest of Section One.
Catherine, can I ask a question with it real quick?
Sure.
Gary, you sent us an email about the Tech stop dollars gonna straighten out 1097, the construction. How is that, is that gonna affect this Montgomery Bend, that entrance there on 1097, or anything?
So part of the work that they're doing on 1097 is they are adding in a right and left turn lane to get into the neighborhood, as well as, so part of that, you have to widen the road, and so they're gonna be kind of smoothing out that turn, so it's not quite so sharp.
But to your point, depending on whether they straighten it, part of Tech's [inaudible] probably would be connected. I don't, they don't have that alignment set.
Oh, you mean to make the drive further out, so, okay, gotcha.
Because, you know, the intent is obviously over to get to 1097 section patch, but that final alignment's still too, yes, that, the blood is in the county's baggage to get.
So the priority came out, where finishing widening 1097 was third on their list of the major four. Do y'all have any feeling for calendar year wise, when that might fall? Because I know there's pending developments there that are waiting on proper access to that road and all these types of things. How spunky do you think that might be in terms of calendar years, if we're third on the list?
2036.
Tech's [inaudible] is gonna be a little bit, even when you do it, and you can see between, you know, that timing and what, how much county participation, I don't know, county [inaudible] discussion, so I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think they have one.
Okay.
Sorry, I just, when you mentioned that name, I was like, let me ask.
That's pretty good cash.
Yeah, absolutely. Speaking of Tech dot, we've got our, the three items that we keep in contact with them. We did on access management along 105, so I did attend a 30% utility locates meeting, Mike and I both attended, just to talk about the existing utilities that may need to be relocated, that they've identified. But again, that project is not planning to begin until summer of 2026, and then the portion that's within the City of Montgomery is in Phase Three, so the city wouldn't really be seeing construction until a couple years after that. So it's a ways out. We are continuing our biweekly operations call, have included your new operator Hayes in those calls, those are always very productive and fruitful. Our impact fee updates, we are, we're going through and updating all of those. We are planning to have a final set here in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll meet with the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee once they're reconvened. And then Lone Star Parkway and Buffalo Springs, y'all are all aware of construction as it currently stands. And then the county is working through Entergy to get power to Signal, is the last item that they're, that they're working on.
Last I talked to Commissioner Walker, his engineers say that the bite should be up in the middle of January. Is that what you're sensing as well?
That's what we're hearing. All they're needing from Entergy is just kind of a city, city go-ahead, and then they'll be able to release the account.
So we're turning lanes in that plan, or is it just a stoplight?
Yes, it was turning lanes also.
Yes, okay.
There is a turning lane there.
Kind of.
About 10 feet. A car. Yeah. So are they gonna take that all the way to 149 then, do you know? Does that plan to take that turn lane all the way to 149?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I haven't seen plans that would take it to all the way to 149.
Still a big need for us. Widening there.
The bridge is gonna be a way.
It is, gonna be a major [inaudible]. That's the area we have the problems getting the width at all, up to that bridge, down that hill and up to the bridge.
Okay.
All right. Anything else?
What's they're digging, is that the Lupe Tortilla that they just started on, on the south side?
Yes, and they were pouring cement the other day, is it?
Yes, Lupe Tortilla is going in on the other side of Buffalo Springs from Autozone, and then just to the north of that is Discount Tire, next to Popeyes.
So I just see the revised plans, December 6th.
Yes, we had approved their original set a few months ago, and they, and released them to start construction. The only thing that was, they had done some adjustments to their parking layout, and so we had to do a re-review, reapproval.
That's why I was wondering, why are they pouring already? Is that something besides parking, or they have some parking? I haven't driven back there, but I'm just looking, it's at the back part of the property where they were pouring.
Yeah, their adjustment was in the back, and just kind of adjusting where that, the edge of the parking lot was gonna be, because it's a change from what was originally approved, we had to re-review it, we had no issues and sent back approval.
And none of that's ever going to interfere with a possible pass-through from, from 2854 eventually to 149? I know it's a concept, but it's a possible...
No, that would be further to the south from that development.
Okay.
Anything on Shipley's?
That's true.
We have not heard anything on Shipley's in a while, they've been quiet.
Yeah, it's odd.
It's new for sale signs up on the properties, so I just wondered if they're still moving.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, I think we're ready for item 20. Mary Ann?
All right. Mayor and Council, you have a monthly report, Finance Report, for the month of October. Not gonna go into detail on this, but I do wanna point out kind of what you're seeing here. So your Budget Report Group Summary, that's at the beginning of the packet, gives you a snapshot of revenue and expense by fund and broken by, down by department within, if that applies. You have a cash analysis report, which shows your, basically your bank balances, and then any activity that occurred in those accounts. They're all done by a numbering system, so that's what those numbers are that you're seeing at the beginning. Then you have a check report, those are for all accounts, all checks that were written in the month of October. And then from page 216 on, that's the detailed account summary corresponds with the group summary at the beginning of the report. That gives you a line-by-line information of the items. And again, this is just for the month of October.
We didn't get one for September, we asked Dave for you to put two in here.
That's essentially what you got today, in that budget amendment.
In the budget.
Yeah, so that will be, that is your year-end, those are all the lines in that We will have, you will get a, kind of a refreshed version, if you wanna consider that when the audit is done, because that's what will tighten everything up from the previous fiscal. But the item Exhibit A is exactly the same type of snapshot for the year-end.
Okay, thank you. Item 21, Police Department Code Enforcement.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. You have the report in front of you, have any questions? I will tell you that I increase patrol, I focus on safety. We put in our first citizens patrol out last week. They've been trained over several weeks to, to just observe it, to observe handicaps, anything suspicious, because in this region, motor vehicle thefts are becoming more and more prevalent, and they're looking for guns. And so we've put our citizens patrol out there, and it's two at a time, and they're never to get out of the car or to do anything except for they have radios to notify the officers that are on the street. So we've got that initiative going, and we're just kinda, gonna see how that works out. You have any questions?
Are you gonna sit at that post office and watch? Because that's all there is, is handicap parking. People go there and park all the time, and the handicaps are blind.
We'll be rolling through there, we'll get you.
I mean, it's, and I've seen people have to stroll out, roll out from non-handicapped, it's not good. The accidents, there's 11, that's a lot for our town. Are there any, any particular place that's a hotspot?
That's just inattention. It's, it's, it's gone down the last couple months, but accidents, you can kind of look at an increase when you get to this time of year. People going and people moving.
And at the school or downtown?
And that's part of our, Ms. Tilly, as part of the transportation, is to look at hotspots and problem spots and safety, and that's first on our agenda moving forward, just so the council knows that we made that a priority. With that said, special request, west side people, a whole heck of a lot of noise on the west loop. A lot of times, we'll have that warning, you'll, you'll put that out around the, the community center there. But once they hit past that community center, it is pedal to the metal. And I can hear it myself where I am, but my neighbor two doors down, especially her backyard's right there, and it's rattling the fence. So it's dump trucks, she says, a lot of it is. If you could kind of make them get a little more serious, I know we have that sign usage there, and you need them through the town, no doubt, but they're screaming on that west loop, trying to get the heck around our city or whatever, and it's, it's pretty bad.
Do they have a no jake break?
What's that?
No jake break?
No.
That's your sound, except they're running their jake breaks.
Oh, that's a jake.
I tell you what we are getting a lot is, these roadways are dark. When you're getting ready to turn on these different streets, this is a dark area, a very dark area.
No doubt.
It's almost hard to find some of the streets here. So, any other questions? That's all we have.
All right. Ms. Tilly, did you have anything?
Unless you had something for me off of the list, if you had any specific questions on any of the nuisances, notice of violation did go out, I think a couple months ago to a property.
Thank you. Item 22, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. From November, I will follow highlights. Continued my annual American City Certified Planners AICP credentially. attended the American Planning Association Texas chapter planning conference, November 8th and 11th, as a coach, very nice and very pleasantly surprised by my sense of the lesson. You don't hear much about that, but I'm attending a regional city meeting, just meeting in Tom Ball, covering area chamber leadership class, attended a servant panel with Wade and Jeff Angelo, and just about current issues of the city. I guess they put on a leadership class for certain folks, and it's just kind of a nice [inaudible]. Issued an ARQ for professional planning services, and responses are due this Friday. So I'm hoping for a good response on that, and that is for the conification of orders in a smaller [inaudible] planning, and stuff that we agreed on super early in our street teaching planning sessions. We kicked off the Transportation Advisory Committee, had our two meetings so far, and we're currently [inaudible] coming out with development director of residents. I did notice that the sales tax [inaudible] on here, I'll send them to you an email, and I'll send that to you, guys. But that's all I have. Any questions, I have an answer.
Gary, have we, are you aware of the House Bill 1922 that's effective January 1st in 2024?
Not.
Okay. It's something that we gotta get approved before the first of the year. So it's, currently, a city's governing body should hold a public hearing and vote to reauthorize any city fee charged as a condition of constructing, renovating, or remodeling a residential or commercial structure at least once every 10 years. Under the bill, if the city fails to do so by the 10th anniversary of the fee being adopted or reauthorized, the fee will be automatically abolished by law. So we wanna make sure that we get to collect on that, and it's gotta be...
HB 1922.
HB 1922. City should, yes. So... City should, yes, so... I don't know who gets our legislative updates. I would imagine Director of Planning is on it.
What was the House Bill number?
1922.
1922.
They're sent out by T and L, because you know, when I look through...
Yeah, I used to see them, yeah. Okay, so we may have a meeting to have an emergency meeting, or so, no?
It goes into Feb. January 1st, that's correct. But I don't think it will impact your fees until sometime later. So what most people are doing are scheduling those hearings along with their budget hearing. I'll double-check that to make sure, so you don't have any impact, but...
Please do. For Gary and Allen both, you know, we talked about before the difficulty in getting direction about Airbnbs, temporary rentals. Are y'all sensing any direction when you went to your training that's pending?
Yeah, and I can tell you that a lot of cities are struggling, and this is not a new issue. A lot of cities are struggling, like looking at this issue. When I was in Georgia, they were waiting for this, we were waiting for the state to regulate. And no one seems to want to touch this thing.
Right.
And provide regulations. There are cities out there that are doing it, right? And these are the cities that I listened to when I went to the training. And it kind of goes back to ordinance. I don't think the state law regulates it at all, as far as I know. So we just need to develop a short-term ordinance. So right now, all we have to go back on is just whenever our zoning district allows, and it just doesn't speak to short-term rentals, talks about bed breakfast. But it's to talk about a real Airbnb, or what we have going on in some areas of the city.
Right.
So to short-answer your question, I don't have an answer, but we have an ordinance for you.
So once we develop an ordinance, then we can collect the hot taxes from that?
No, we don't need to develop an ordinance to help collect the hot taxes, they should pay that.
Right.
They should pay that now.
And based on where I see them, yeah, we're not paying.
And build a case, and all that takes time and research.
And we had, I had worked on to do that, but Casey was telling me earlier that he never showed back yet, but we definitely, I mean, I think I've mentioned this before, Jeff Angelo's told me, a hot price, he's like, I pay it, but I don't know where it's going. Because we've never seen it here, and that blue oak, when Tom Cornet had begun it, we never saw anything. And I think the only thing we've ever seen was on Mary's place.
Mary Eckartz is that one?
Well, it's ever showed up, yeah, I know there's a couple on college, one on college.
Huh? Jeff says he does pay it?
He does, he pays it, but I have...
I don't see it.
The previous, Richard Deva, I asked several times, like, go chase it down, and nobody, didn't get that happen, so... I just, because I know that somebody rented out at Tom's place for a month for $10,000. Well, that's good, that's a good tax money for us.
Yeah, we're missing some money, yeah, we're hanging out, we'll talk about that, so we can, yes, we're missing revenue, we just... There's a cost to have a company come in, finding these and enforce that. So the question is, is the cost worth going after this?
But if we don't, the handful of names that... Should we be able to go to the state, the controller, and say, okay, here's the six that we have, that we're aware of? Can you give us...
Yeah, theoretically, we should report that to someone, whether they have done that or not, but these are things that we need to...
Allen, refresh my memory, or maybe one of y'all can refresh my memory. Possibly Carol for sure, but whether it was EDC and/or city council, we had somebody, at least two meetings worth, may have been two years ago, I don't can't remember. And they, they were working on figuring out how much money we could get, and I thought we were paying that person to do it, and then it just...
Right, he was talking to the guy from Conrail, we used him, the same guy. Azovar, yeah, them.
You have been talking to them?
Azovar, Azovar, yeah. And so they've not found a red penny for us, have they?
So...
Yeah, fill us in on that.
They've been here a couple of years, at least.
The agreement that was made with Azovar was strictly to provide a means to collect your hot tax. It was not, their agreement does not have them actively searching for entities that should be paying that tax, okay? They provide a platform, which is through local gov, where people actually go in, pay that hot tax, that gets deposited to us. That's what I've been talking with Gary about, because they do have a service available for a fee, where they will basically, you know, scrub all of the databases that show what short-term rentals are in our jurisdiction that we potentially should be collecting from, right? So whether that's on Airbnb, VBRo, whatever, there's like 20 or, no, there's 200 different types of sites, even just Facebook, Marketplace, those type of things. So there is a fee for that. I can tell you that in their initial scrub of that information, just to give us an idea as to how many properties there are, there are approximately 20 properties in our jurisdiction that should be paying hot tax. Our hot tax rate is 7%. Keep in mind that when you say a month, if somebody, typically if somebody rents for 30 consecutive days, that is tax exempt. So it is only, we're really only looking at...
Wait, what, they're saying for a month, they don't pay any taxes on that stay?
If it is 30 consecutive days in the same, yes. That is a, that's how hot tax works. So in the state of Texas, if you are, that's considered like a long-term rent.
It's not a short-term rental.
So then they should be paying property taxes, not 30 days?
Well, the owner of that will be paying.
Well, they're not paying property taxes, but I'm like, they'd be paying that anyway, so there's nothing, that's bizarre.
No, it's just rental.
That's, that's just a straight rental, because you're not paying, you're not paying hot taxes.
But they get, the hot taxes have...
I know, but if you rent a hotel for 30 days, you can...
They like resort fees and all that, or they'll be...
No, I'm just saying...
The same is true with hotels, if you stay at a hotel for 30 days or more, it's, you don't pay the sales, or the hotel occupancy tax. So it is something that we're looking at, it is a part of the, the whole conversation with short-term rental and how that works. But there is not currently, under the contract with them, a mechanism for them to actively go out. Now, if we identify that there is something, and we see that we are not collecting from them, we can certainly provide them information. They will, we will work with them to send a letter saying, you know, hey, you're supposed to, you are subject to hot tax, here's how you pay, that type of thing.
It's not based on where the owner is living, it's based on where the property is created.
So only 20 properties within our four miles was, was, was that all?
That's quite a few.
That's a lot.
Four miles.
I was thinking there were like six.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure I know.
20 properties with only 1,100 caps, that's quite a...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So are we paying the company anything? We only pay if they provide...
Right, so in order to engage that part of their service, there is a fee for that. It's...
Is that based on collection fee, so you pay a percentage of what you collect instead of a flat fee?
So it's based on a couple of things. It's based on that preliminary information that I told you about of there being 20 properties. Of those 20 properties, the revenue that those 20 properties are currently generating is about $125,000 a year. So the tax to us is between 8,000 and 9,000.
Hey, that's a lot.
So based on that information, that service is $3,500 a year. So we would...
Your net is about $4,000 or $5,000.
Correct. So...
Do you have to use a company like that?
It would be difficult for us, yeah, it would be difficult for us, I think, to identify. I mean, we don't have the access to those 200 different databases to do that, nor the manpower to do that.
So could we have them identify, and then drop them in a year, and then just start collecting on those? And then maybe five years, they come back, and they identify more?
It's a three-year contract, it's a three-year contract, for $3,500.
Well, I mean, my first year as mayor, so 2018, we were paying like $300 a year for hot taxes. So that's, that sounds like we're millionaires with 9,000, but, I mean, I'm like, wow, that's a lot.
Right, so that is one of the things that we're talking about. We will be coming back to council with more information on that, and, you know, taking a look at what all is included in that service, and presenting it to you at a later time.
That would be helpful, thank you.
9,000, 20,000.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the departmental reports.
Motion by Carol to approve the reports. Have a second?
Second.
Second, I'll take Cheryl, motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving the departmental reports? Departmental reports, items 15 through 22, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we'll approve the departmental reports. Executive session adjourned to close. Executive session is authorized by the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Government Code of the State of Texas, Sections 551.071, Consultation with Attorney, Town Creek/Atkins Creek Drainage Engineering Study. It is 7:43, and we are adjourned to the Texas session.
I recognize her, not him. I haven't seen him.
I hadn't seen him before, I'm like, oh.
I think that's who it was, because I think he died in the 1990s.
Oh. That gentleman was like, they're over here, and then I went in there. I saw a couple right here. I don't remember. They stand, they're warm. He's thinking they're all oozing. It's not obvious. Maybe, but... It's a great Miller, isn't it?
Yeah. Good job, Jim. So this is, yeah.
Something hot, something yummy.
Tonight?
Yeah, I'm just...
Yeah. I need one. I'm glad you're here. Well, good. Yeah, I'm gonna get a bite, for sure. Yeah, that's it.